I have one somewhere, it's just a matter of...
Good afternoon. I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission of May fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. A printed agenda is available outside the hearing room and a copy of the full agenda, including the staff reports, are available online at the Planning Department, Room two thirteen. The Open Meetings Act is posted just inside the doors at the back of the room. Out of courtesy for those attending this meeting, commissioners and the staff, cell phones may not be used in the chamber during any portion of today's meeting. We appreciate your cooperation. Please note, the Planning Commission action today is final on the following item, which is Item four point one, Special Permit two five zero one zero. Any aggrieved person may appeal final action of the Planning Commission to the City Council or the County Board by filing a notice of appeal with the clerk within fourteen days following the action of the Planning Commission. Planning Commission action on all other items is a recommendation to the City Council or the County Board. The first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held April sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
So move, Campbell.
Second, Joy.
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Eber? Sorry. Edens?
Yes.
Byte?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Minutes approved. We will now proceed with today's agenda. The next item of business is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be called at the same time and will not be scheduled for a separate public hearing unless there is a request from someone wishing to speak or at the request of a commission member. I will now ask Shelley to read all of the consent agenda items into the record. Once those items are read, she will ask if there is anyone wishing to speak. If you wish to speak on an item that is on the consent agenda, we would ask that you stand and state that item. That item will then be removed from the consent agenda and scheduled as a separate public hearing under Section three of today's agenda. All items remaining on the consent agenda will be voted upon in total with a motion for approval. Shelley, will you please call the items on the consent agenda?
I'd like to please note that Item one point four A miscellaneous two five zero zero four and Item one point four B miscellaneous two five zero zero five are being removed from the consent agenda today and scheduled for a separate public hearing. First item is one point one, Comprehensive Plan Conformance two five zero zero two. To review as to conformance with the two thousand and fifty Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan, a request to declare city property as surplus on property generally located at Northwest Roadhouse Drive and West O Street. Item one point two A, Annexation two five zero zero three to Annex, approximately fifteen point two seven acres, associated with Item one point two B, Change of Zone two five zero one zero, to change the zone from A G Agricultural to R three Residential, both on property generally located at South Seventy-Ninth Street and Augustine Avenue. Item one point three, Special Permit two five zero one zero, a permit, a parking lot within five feet above the property line in the front yard setback on property generally located at North thirty-fourth, Thirty-First Street and S Street, and this is final action. Are there any expertise communications to be disclosed on these items?
No.
Are there any expertise communication that took place or additional information you learned while visiting these sites to be disclosed?
No.
If there is anyone here wishing to speak on these consent agenda items, please stand and state that item.
Okay, we do not see anyone here that would like to speak on the consent agenda item, so we would now entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
I would move to approve the consent agenda, Campbell.
Second, Joy.
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Eber?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Byte?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Consent agenda approved, nine to zero. There are no requests for deferral, so we will now proceed to public hearings. Prior to staff making a brief presentation, each staff person should state their name, agency, and address. The applicant will then be requested to present his or her testimony, followed by those who wish to testify in support, followed by those who wish to testify in opposition. The staff will then be given an opportunity to respond to the testimony, and then the applicant shall have an opportunity for rebuttal. If during your testimony you have copies of documents or materials you would like distributed to the Planning Commission members and/or included as part of the record, please provide them to the clerk. Each person testifying should state their name and address and shall have five minutes to speak unless additional time is requested and granted. The clerk will use the light system to help aid the timing of your testimony. The lights will appear on the monitors provided. The clerk will indicate when you have one minute remaining to wrap up your testimony. The red light indicates that your five minutes have expired, and once the final minute has lapsed, the clerk will indicate that your time is up. The Planning Commission will vote immediately at the close of the public hearing unless the commission votes to defer action or to continue the public hearing. Shelley, please call the first public hearing item.
First items are the items that were removed from the consent agenda. Item one point four A miscellaneous two five zero zero four, to review the proposed determination that the Lincoln Cornhusker redevelopment area be declared blighted and substandard as defined in the Nebraska Community Development Law. The study area is approximately two thousand and sixty-five acres, generally located between North Fifty-Sixth Street on the east, Colfax Avenue on the north, North Twenty-seventh Street on the west, and Holder Street on the south. And Item one point four B miscellaneous two five zero zero five, to review the proposed determination that the Lincoln Cornhusker Blight Area meets the statutory definition of extremely blighted, as defined in the Nebraska Community Development Law. The study area is approximately two thousand and sixty-five acres, generally located between North Fifty-Sixth Street on the east, Colfax Avenue on the north, North Twenty-seventh Street on the west, and Holder Street on the south. Are there, are there any expertise communications to be disclosed on this application?
Yes.
So this came up in our neighborhood meeting. We had somebody who wanted to come to our meeting to talk about blighting a certain area, and this also came to the Clinton neighborhood at the same time, so we thought they were joined together and then realized they're areas outside of this one, but it was talked about at length at the neighborhood organization meeting.
Good afternoon. Peter Heine, Director of Urban Development, five 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 South Tenth Street. I'm here today to request that we delay this action to June eleventh. Some of the feedback we've gotten and our ability to work with our consultant, our consultant has a family matter that they're attending to right now, and we're not able to meet with them, so we're asking for this delay and we'll come back on, on June eleventh. I do want to say for the record, though, that some of the feedback we had gotten publicly was that we hadn't followed all of our legal notice periods, and we checked into that, and we have, in fact, met all of those required dates, so I wanted to share that with you moving forward. Any questions that I can answer for you today?
Peter?
Yes.
Is there a, are you planning on holding some open houses or meetings with the neighborhood that had shown some concerns?
Yeah, we're going to reach out to the Clinton neighborhood that was mentioned, and we did include this topic in the University Place Subarea Plan that Planning led, and so this has been talked about publicly at multiple open houses, but we will reach out. I can't promise exactly how those will, will roll out. We have a month to do that, but we will sort of, we'll, we'll restart the clock, so to speak, and we will, we will, Planning has asked us to just resubmit this and start over, so we'll do that through that process. Sorry, did you have a question, too?
He said that, or he asked my question.
Okay, great. Anything else?
All right, so you're requesting a deferral until June eleventh?
That's correct.
Okay. I don't think we have any other questions for you at this time.
Thank you for your consideration.
Someone, I would entertain...
You, go ahead.
I move that we defer miscellaneous two five zero zero four and miscellaneous two five zero zero five until the June eleventh meeting.
Second, Campbell.
All right. Okay, Ball? Oh, hold on just a second. We have a motion on the floor, but I don't know that we're ready to vote. We have a, we may have a question.
Can we do those in one motion like that? That was just my quick question.
Yes.
Perfect. Good deal.
And we usually ask if anybody would like to speak today instead of on June eleventh.
But it's after we vote.
And the only other comment I'd like to make is, we did have a lot of this during, during our subarea plan discussion, and so that was nice from the standpoint of those of us that participated in the University Place Subarea Plan, but I can understand why it's very necessary to continue that discussion throughout the community.
All right, just to respond, the North Forty-Eighth Street one always ended at Thirty-Third, and when they came out with the blighted, they moved it over to Twenty-seventh, so you encompassed a good chunk of another neighborhood that wasn't even a, I mean, they knew stuff was going on on Forty-Eighth, but it didn't affect them. So that's where the disconnect from those public meetings came into play.
Which makes a lot of sense. I think it's very appropriate, and if I recall, you did a great job of mentioning to look at that area to the west of Thirty-Third, so I appreciate the staff looking at that.
All right. Any other discussion? All right, now Shelley. Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Eber?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Byte?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Us nine to zero. All right. Is there anyone here today that wishes to speak on those items today? If you do, it will be entered into the record as official testimony will be considered at the next meeting, but then you would not speak again June eleventh. But if somebody is here and would like to speak today, we would hear that testimony now, otherwise you could come back on June eleventh and speak during the public hearing, and you also have time to submit written testimony that would also be considered by commissioners and entered into the record. Okay. We will now move to the next item on the agenda.
Okay. Item four point one, Change of Zone two five zero zero seven, District Thirty-three, Plan Unit Development, for a change of zone on approximately twelve point two seven acres from B three Commercial District to B three Commercial District, P U D, Plan Unit Development, a change of zone from O two Office District to B three Commercial District, Plan Unit Development, a change of zone from R two Residential District to B three Commercial District, Plan Unit Development, a change of zone from R two Residential District to R four Residential District, P U D, and a change of zone from R two Residential District to R two Residential District, Plan Unit Development, on property generally located along South Thirty-Third Street, north and south of A Street, and along A Street from Normal Boulevard to west of South Thirty-Fifth Street. Are there any expertise communications to be disclosed on this application?
No.
Are there any expertise communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting any of this site to be disclosed?
No.
Good afternoon. Aiden Johnson, Planning Department, five 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 South Tenth Street, Room two one three. This proposal seeks to rezone approximately twelve point seven eight acres near South Thirty-Third and A Street, the existing B three, R two, and O two zoning to a planned unit development P U D overlay. This overlay would create new B three P U D, R two P U D, and R four P U D, oh, P U D districts, allowing for a more flexible and community-oriented development approach. The proposal layout includes forty-four lots of B three P U D for a mixed commercial node, sixteen lots for R four P U D for higher-density housing, and two lots for R two P U D lower-density housing. The P U D also includes waivers for modified zoning, zoning standards such as reduced parking requirements, increased residential density, alcohol sales, and modified setbacks. The District Thirty-three P U D originated from efforts of local business owner Terry Leggie, who is here with us today. Mr. Leggie reached out to neighboring business owners like Moran's Liquor and A Street Market who have been facing zoning challenges. Many expressed frustration with the restrictive zoning, which had limited their ability to grow and adapt. These business owners, now referred to as champions of the project, became vocal advocates for a more flexible zoning approach that could support revitalization within the corridor. In March two thousand and twenty-five, a pre-application meeting was held to explore the idea of transforming the Thirty-Third and A Street area into more vibrant and viable commercial center. Shortly after, the City of Lincoln hosted a neighborhood meeting at Randolph Elementary on March twenty-seventh, inviting stakeholders with the proposed P U D boundary as well as property owners within two hundred feet. At this meeting, champions presented the vision, a walkable, community-focused district blending neighborhoods serving commercial uses with additional housing options. Following set, following feedback from the public, the proposal was revised to address concerns and find a thoughtful balance between business needs and neighborhood character. The formal application includes a zoning change request to establish a P U D that accommodates both commercial and residential development. A key goal of this proposal is to support missing middle housing like duplexes, triplexes, and small-scale multifamily units, while also establishing a functional and attractive commercial core. District Thirty-three is well-suited for this transformation. The area contains a mix of existing buildings and vacant parcels, and its location near major roads and pedestrian bike trails enhance accessibility and connectivity. The P U D would activate underutilized land and support growth in both housing and business sectors. If approved, this change of zone within the District Thirty-three P U D, as you can see on the screen, would update and waive several sections of the Lincoln Municipal Code to better, better serve the neighborhood. These updates include modifications to land use, parking, signage, setbacks, and building height. Key changes include allowing both on sale and off sale alcohol on establishments, expanding permitted uses which many are previously required to be special or conditional permits, prohibiting less compatible uses such as motor vehicle sales and fuel sales in specific areas to maintain alignment with neighborhood goals, reducing front yard setbacks, lowering residential parking requirements, eliminating, eliminating non-residential parking minimums, and allowing for minor signage changes to be approved administratively. Details for each planning area and the specific application of these changes can be found in the general notes section of the attachments. These updates provide development flexibility while maintaining compatibility with the neighborhood's character and goals. The District Thirty-three P U D strongly supports the City of Lincoln's two thousand and fifty Comprehensive Plan. It aligns with the city's long-term vision by encouraging walkable, mixed-use neighborhoods and promoting greater housing diversity. The P U D supports the development of complete neighborhoods where housing, retail, services, and amenities are accessible within a fifteen-minute walk. It also encourages infill and refill develop, and redevelopment in underutilized spaces and promotes a variety of housing types, including missing middle options, while preserving neighborhood character and leveraging existing infrastructure. Additionally, it fosters economic opportunity by thoughtfully integrating commercial uses and reinforcing the city's vision for a vibrant, inclusive nodes and corridors that serve diverse incomes, ages, and lifestyles. Because of the strong alignment with the city's planning goals, the Planning Department recommends approval for all proposed zoning and code modifications under the District Thirty-three P U D. To conclude, the District Thirty-three P U D is a community-driven, forward-thinking proposal and addresses longstanding zoning limitations while creating new opportunities for both residential and commercial development. It promotes walkability, housing diversity, and local economic growth, all while respecting the surrounding neighborhood's characteristics. Backed by strong community support and designed to meet the needs of current and future residents, District Thirty-three has the potential to become a model for sustainable and inclusive urban development in Lincoln. Are there any questions?
Yeah, go ahead.
I am just really curious, because it's an interesting shape. How were the, how was the boundary determined?
Yeah, so we've had, this is about the second version of this boundary. We originally had a little bit more of a clean-cut, part triangle, part rectangular shape that we proposed at the neighborhood meeting at Randolph on March twenty-seventh. There we had a couple of questions from the community. Some neighbors with, within and outside in that two-hundred-foot boundary had a little concerns regarding their property, whether it was included, whether if it would be too close. Some people also were wondering if they could extend it to include their property, and so that's really how we kind of shapeshifted this form and how it kind of became to, little zigzaggy it is today, just to kind of meet the needs of the neighborhood, and any comments or concerns or extra, like alternatives they were hoping for, for them to have support in the P U D.
What concerns did some folks have about being included?
A lot of people were concerned regarding, not necessarily their property being included, more along the lines of they were concerned about having this new high-rise apartment building come in, or a four-level apartment over a commercial use or a restaurant coming in. So we kind of addressed that. Some people just didn't want to be in general because they were worried that they might try to get bought out, you know, just the whole process of, well, now I'm allowing more or less limitations for my land, and not sure if I'm super comfortable with it, but a lot of it was regarding the, the fear about the higher density, regarding if there would be large apartment complexes or buildings coming in.
Okay. Thank you. No questions for staff at this time? All right. And then the, we will now have testimony from the applicant.
Either one.
Okay. Good afternoon. Terry Loggie, thirty-eight hundred Loveland Drive, here in Lincoln. I prepared a speech so that I would stay on task and not get outside of my boundary here, so I'm going to read directly from that. This is an exciting milestone for us. This has probably been about eighteen months of engagement between the community and with the city, and so being here today is, is exciting, but also nerve-wracking, so that's why I'm going to use this speech today. So this is part of an organic process that included daily interactions with the local neighborhood at places like Moran's. My wife and I own some of the commercial property along Thirty-Third, and through that we've been doing a lot of our own work, and so we had that opportunity to have some one-on-one discussions with those around. So we hear a lot of what you have today in this P U D as a result of some of those interactions, one-on-one chats with neighbors, and of course, as Aiden mentioned, at the public open house we had. All this occurred through a genuine interest in seeing the community benefit from the flexibility that the P U D can provide. We also not only have an investment in the community itself from our property, but also one of the businesses we want to open. But in addition, my wife grew up in the area for fifteen years. I lived nearby and shopped at A Street Market for many years, so it's an area that we've grown to love and appreciate, and so there's a lot of care about how we approach this, which is demonstrated by the open house going through the process. We are not developers or, you know, have some big private interest involved here. This is just local, you know, grassroots-type interest. So this is about helping also the small business area in the neighborhood. We can kind of attest to that through some of our own interactions with businesses that would like to have leased from us, but because of some of the constraints, they chose they could not do that. And I can expand on that with any direct question. So, so this is about expanding some of the opportunity in the neighborhood, make it more walkable, livable area, but those additional services that you can get by just simply leaving your home and going to it instead of having to be in a, in a car to go to, to. So this includes neighborhoods like Forty-Fifth and A and the Woods Boulevard, which all are real close and could benefit from expanded possibilities. So I am eager to hear your perspectives and opinions as we collaborate to form this community and the opportunities that we hope the P U D can provide. So with that, that's my speech.
All right. Not at this time. After testimony, if there are things that you would like to respond to, we'll have a chance for applicant rebuttal. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
All right. At this time, we will hear testimony in support of this application. Is there anyone here who would like to testify in support? Anyone who would like to testify in a neutral capacity? Or anyone who would like to testify in opposition? Okay, one at a time. Come forward, name, address, and...
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity.
Either side is a microphone, sorry.
Thank you for the opportunity. I bought, my name is Linda Barna, thirty-three, thirty-six Washington Street. I bought my house twenty-four years ago, April first, two thousand and one. I bought it because it is a walkable neighborhood, so I appreciate the concept a lot. I only have a few concerns. Our business owners, Moran's, the new ownership at Lincoln Pharmacy, A Street Market, amazing, support them wholeheartedly. My two concerns are, there's already a lot of traffic problems here. Thirty-Third and Normal, we have accidents all the time. There are, there's the park right there, but there is no good pathway to get from the park to this new walkable area. How will we get the citizens across that street safely? I've lived there for twenty-one years, and I drive that all the time. I have twenty-four years, and I drive it all the time. So if we want to make it walkable, considering the zoo and Antelope Park, which both get huge amounts of traffic, as you know, that Thirty-Third and Normal intersection seriously needs to be considered. It should be considered anyway. It's already a problem. It's already a problem. The other issue I have is, and I think that a lot of people here in the neighborhood could attest, at Thirty-third and A and Normal during business hours, there is a lot of congestion and it's only single lane each way. And I've seen a lot of people do stupid things there trying to make it through the light and there's a lot of accidents there also. So I'm worried about the traffic. If we're making it walkable, we have to make sure it's safely walkable. The other issue I have, I've seen a bunch of different maps, not just two. This one does not include my house.
Can you point out your house?
How do I do that? With the mark?
That's a good question. There you go.
That's me right there.
Good job.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm right here. For twenty-one years, I have amended the soil right up to the back fence. For twenty-one years, I have made a beautiful organic space to grow my vegetables. There is no alley behind my house. Right now, you don't show the zone going behind my house. But my concern, and I came here out of concern because the last map showed that. There's no alleyway. So if we have parking right up against the fence, I have salt, I have oil, I have runoff. I have people driving through the fence, who knows? We did come to the city, gosh, it might have been about twelve years ago, when the house behind us was trying to apply to be a temporary employment agency. And they started doing business before they were permitted. And the businesses across the street at A Street and Moran's, the owners at the time, supported us because they had people parking in their lots but going over there. So whatever we do put in, I'm hearing reduced parking codes. I don't think that's going to work very well. I'm worried about A Street. They have a large lot. Are they going to be able, you know, to make sure that that's just their customers in that lot? There's a lot to consider. I love walkable cities and I'm not trying to say not in my backyard. I'm trying to say there's more to consider, especially when it comes to the congestion that we already have. And are these going to be places to live that people can actually afford? You see all this apartments going all over the town, but everybody I work with can't afford to live there. So I don't see the point in adding more apartments people can't afford. This is a moderately incomeed neighborhood.
One more minute.
Just something to think about. So that's, those are my main concerns. If a business is going against my backyard, I want fifteen, twenty-foot buffer. And you really need to consider that you could be endangering a lot of people without thinking about how they're going to get across Normal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Next testimony, next fire.
Good afternoon. Hi, my name is Seth. I'm also at thirty-three, thirty-six Washington.
Can you give your last name? Okay, but can you add your last name?
Whitfath, W-I-T-F as in Frank, O-T-H. We got it at Ellis Island. But yeah, I've, I basically grew up in this house, in this neighborhood. There's the Fast Mart on the southwest corner of Thirty-third and A. There's the Credit Union. We have a pharmacy. We have yoga and workout. We have a barber. We had, we used to have an Altronics electronics place. We have got Moran's. I mean, I can already walk everywhere in this neighborhood. I guess I'm just kind of concerned that if we're adding, it sounds like the main thing that's being added is, from what I understand, a four-story apartment complex. And I'm very concerned about, parking is a big deal because we do have a lot of traffic issues at Thirty-third and A. Constantly cars are parked in the middle during busy times of the day because they just get stuck in the middle of the intersection and then people on Thirty-third can't go through because that light takes forever. I'm concerned that people are going to start parking in front of our house or parking just in the neighborhood. And I'm worried that we're just going to see just a maze of cars of people that are just visiting the neighborhood that don't live there. Also, maybe people on higher, like there's a lot of bungalows and low houses with big yards here. I'm concerned that having a building that tall, you can look into people's backyards and it could be a privacy concern potentially. I don't know. I just know that having stuff like this nearby really concerns me as to what direction the neighborhood will go, how loud it will get, how busy it will get, and just how it will affect the peaceful life I've enjoyed living in the neighborhood up until this point. So that's all I've got.
Thank you very much. All right, is there any additional testimony on this application? Okay, staff questions?
Cindy.
Yes, sir. Here's a staff question.
Aiden.
But go ahead, you can start.
Aiden, if that were to expand in the future to run behind her property, what is, what is the setback requirements of B three?
Off the top of my, are you saying like within the new PUD or like currently? Yeah.
Currently.
Let me double-check in our notes so we can, on the same page. So with PUD, we are having, I'm pretty sure these setbacks, and Steve Hendrickson might be able to help me comment a little bit more about this one. We are only changing the front yard setback with not in a B three PUD, correct?
Correct. Steve Hendrickson with the Planning Department, five-five-five South Tenth Street. I just happen to have the zoning ordinance open. So yes, when it's a commercial B three adjacent to residential zoning, the rear yard setback is thirty feet.
Okay, thank you.
But as was noted, the previous proposal, which I had to look it up because I did remember, it was from two thousand and eight. So it was even longer than I thought. I would have thought it was twelve years ago as well. That was for thirty-three, thirty-three A Street and that was defeated and that's not included in the PUD. So the property behind her house at this point is not in the PUD and is not being changed.
Well, and if someone did want to build a large apartment building, they would have to show adequate space for parking, correct?
Correct.
Can we talk about traffic within a PUD? I drive this often. And if you hit non-busy times, it's the best way to head south. If you hit it during really busy times, when everybody's either coming downtown or going out from downtown at Normal, it's tricky to get out on that road. And you do see people, that's five lanes of traffic you're trying to get across to to get to that park. So how does that work within a PUD? Do they look at traffic flow in a PUD? Could it help with the traffic of that PUD? That's my question.
The PUD itself is specifically focused on the zoning, not necessarily circulation or the traffic. While that is, you know, something to be thought about and it's not the first time we've heard, that's more of a city issue that's unrelated to the PUD. It would just be a concern come from the PUD that we would have to address separately.
Follow up on that then. If this PUD is passed today, or this, this update, that could solicit conversations to other departments
Correct.
to study this area, study the walkability, study if there could be a better trail put in to get over to where you can go across Normal. Those kinds of conversations could potentially happen once this is kind of in place.
Correct. And this has to go through like, you know, everything else through reviews with other departments. And it only took one review and every department recommended approval of this PUD. So at LCU, Engineering, Watershed, Health, they've all been incorporated and through the whole process with us and in the pre-application meeting as well to address any concerns early on. So everyone's recommended approval and is aware of the situation.
Is the traffic congestion, is the traffic density, I'll put it that way, is the traffic density sufficient to trigger a traffic study?
That is a question I might also have to pass over to Steve Hendrickson.
Hi, Steve.
There you go.
So at any time, LCU might determine that something meets warrants, let's say there's federal warrants in terms of certain number of car accidents or pedestrian concerns. And so they can definitely look at that. I mean, this is, one of the challenges is that when you're trying to encourage the businesses in the area and you want them to grow and be successful, to be successful, that does mean perhaps a few more people come to your business and so a few more cars are coming to the neighborhood. So it's somewhat of the trade-offs there. And the one thing that we definitely heard from, as we're talking to businesses here, is they don't want to see the number of lanes expand because there's really just nowhere to go. So it is kind of a trade-off, but it is ultimately up the city, as we do across the city, to look at, can you adjust signal timing? What can be done? And certainly while Normal right now is being under repair, the long-term, we are definitely looking at it. And one of the main spots that the city has known for years, we need to figure out a solution, if possible, is Fortieth and Normal because you have the intersection of a bunch of streets all in one location. And so the city at various times has looked at options of that. So all of those things, we don't disagree that, yep, it's a challenge at certain times of day to get through the area, but we still think it's a good thing to see revitalization of this neighborhood. We've already seen a lot of businesses invest in this area and hoping with these changes, you'll see even more investment. But the nice thing is, is this really has been just local businesses. There isn't a national chain here that is, a part of it is just really the local folks who have invested and who want to try to do, change a few things to help keep it be successful in the future.
And if there is a four-level building or whatever, has it been determined where it potentially would be?
Yes, so we've kind of sectioned out, as you can kind of see in this map right here, different planning areas. And one of the waivers we had modified was for planning, or for Planning Area Four in the PUD. Let me go to a different map.
There we go.
Yeah, let me go up to a little bit above.
It'd look like.
So Planning Area Four is kind of the main commercial hub in here.
Yeah, that's where the...
And that's the only area that we have that we have allowed for increase in height to be forty-five feet. Everything else, we've taken in a lot of, before the first round of reviews at the Neighborhood Meeting, there was a lot of concerns because we had a higher density and height allowance in the others' planning areas that are right now residential. So we limited it down from previously, I think we had an R six or R five and now it's R four and we're only allowing up to like a triplex in reality, like density-wise. That's really the hope for it. And anything else I might follow.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but at least one of those buildings is now an not often-used hall, like a...
Oh, like a city hall or like a community space?
Community space, yeah. But I don't think it gets used very often. And on the other side of the street is businesses. So that concern that maybe a high-rise would be looking over into people's bedrooms or backyards or whatever, if that's where the building would be, it would not really impact people who are living right there because right now it's commercial. So if that's where it's...
You may note, just a little bit outside of the boundary of the PUD, on the west side of Thirty-third Street is the Latvian Church's social hall. And kind of to the northeast of it is the Latvian Church itself. Both of those properties are outside of the PUD. So any redevelopment or change in use with those would be independent of the PUD. The main discussion that came up at the meeting was, was there interest in having perhaps apartment development, it's to be fairly small scale, along Normal Boulevard? Because you have a stretch of houses there that are between the four lanes of Normal Boulevard and the commercial uses just to the northeast of them. And at that time, there wasn't a lot of support for that being rezoned to a higher-density district. So it is R four. It would allow those houses at this point to be duplexes. But if anybody wanted to come forward to actually propose apartments along there, that would come back through the process.
All right, additional questions for staff? Thank you. All right, applicant rebuttal.
No, I appreciate the input you provided. Those are things that we want to be cognizant of as we move forward. I would say I would love to see something that makes the connection between the park and the business area because that would just enhance the walkability that we're focused on trying to achieve. So I guess with that, I would love to see something like that done. But outside of what we're trying to achieve here, I think it is, we're trying to be very responsible in considering people's opinions. And I can appreciate the perception of traffic. I think that is always a concern when you hear about changes to areas. Whether that's realized or not is another perception as well. So that would be the one thing I'd say is that perception versus reality is not necessarily determinant of what the PUD could provide or affect. So that's all I'd say.
All right, additional questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd move to close the public hearing.
Second, Joy. Paul?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Ebert?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Fay?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rodenberg?
Yes.
Rymon?
Yes.
Public hearing closed.
And I would move to approve change of zone two-five-zero-zero-seven.
Second, Joy. All right, let's have some discussion.
Oh, sorry, quit.
Go ahead, we'll just go this way.
This is an area I grew up with and know it. And that grocery store has been there forever. It's an area that does need some revitalization. And I think what's been proposed would be very helpful to that and I don't think would disturb the residential area that's further away.
I also support this. There is traffic concerns there, there is no doubt. And I use Thirty-third because I avoid Fortieth because of the mess over there. So I did, I don't know which one you need first. I think the revitalization of this area could bring more of a spotlight onto it and could help with some traffic studies in the future, especially if you get people from outside that neighborhood coming in and complaining about it as well. That might actually be the catapult to get it moving.
I will support this too. I just, I do really hope the community stays engaged, all the neighbors stay engaged because this is the first step and I hope it's the first step of many steps to revitalizing the space. You know, talk to LCU about traffic. Talk to Lincoln Parks and Rec about trails. It's wonderful you grow vegetables. I hope you know now you could sell them from your backyard through the new food plan. Let's chat about that. So you could start a little market in Thirty... I mean, I think there are a lot of great opportunities to continue, like you said, finding opinions from neighbors and continuing to engage and make this space just as gorgeous as like University Place now is revitalizing. So it's a very exciting time for Lincoln and just continue to communicate with each other.
I agree with my fellow commissioners and I'll be supporting this also.
Just a little history. My first house after moving back to Lincoln from Wisconsin was on Chautauqua, which backs right up to this rezoning. And I was very happy to find that there were four houses along Thirty-third Street that were zoned business already, although they were very small residences. And I purchased two of them and for twenty-five years, I ran bike peddlers out of those two homes. When I sold to two of my employees, they purchased the business, the Blue Sky and inventory. But a developer bought all the houses between Culligan and Dental Design on the west side of Thirty-third Street, right at B Street. And his intention was to take them all out and build a, for lack of better terms, a strip mall. And then two thousand and seven happened and the recession and never did. Those homes are still there and Little Mountain T-shirt shop. And there's another business directly to the north that's still operating out of those homes. and there's another business directly to the north that's still operating out of those homes. Now, they were residences and the city came in and said, oh, well, sure, you can have a business there, but I had to make a, I think, a 30-foot turning radius off of 33rd so people could pull into the parking without coming to a stop. Had to put new windows, explosion-proof windows in. Many things that the city required for me to convert that into a small business. And I think that the folks that are going to be looking at maybe putting in some small businesses here will have some hurdles, but they're all for the good. About a year after I started Bike Peddlers, they came in and widened 33rd Street and they said, oh, we have to take out the parking in front of your building or we can put it back in, but you have to pay for it. And so I was assessed two parking spots along 33rd and all for the good. I think that part of this PUD is not experiencing any traffic problems. It's when you get up to Normal that you might be seeing some need for additional crosswalks or lighting or something. But I'm all in favor of this. It's a great little business community. It's transitioned over the years and I think that the folks that are investing in this area really would love to see it become a nice little community business area with coffee shops and maybe some more restaurants and just fun stuff. And I'm all in favor of this proposal.
I just also wanted to join in with my fellow commissioners to say, outside of the designation of this PUD, I think anyone who has driven through that neighborhood understands there are some traffic challenges. And so if it does help bring attention to that and safety with making it walkable, bikeable, that's fantastic. I also, you know, heard the comment about the affordability of rent for any apartments, duplexes, townhouses that are developed because we all know that that is an area of concern in our community and something that I know our city is focused on developing. And this could be a really incredible area for young adults, new career people to find affordable places close to lots of businesses and even for people maybe who don't drive to access public transportation and still have access to a lot of walkable amenities. So I will also be voting in favor and echo fellow commissioner in terms of encouraging the neighborhood to stay involved and as it develops and to thank the people in the neighborhood who have come together to develop it. So it's really a great grounds-up opportunity for our city. Philly? All right, Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Ebert?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Fight?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Reiman Yos?
Yes.
Approved, nine to zero. At this time, anyone who wishes to speak on an item not on today's agenda may do so.
Seeing none, I move that we adjourn.
Second, Joy. Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Ebert?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Fight?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Reiman Yos?
Yes.